Hey, can you hear me?
All right.
If we're here, I will have these meetings either.
Well, it's also now.
Yes, I am too, so.
And we call the order, the Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty five zoning board of appeals. Can we get a roll call?
First back. Blue. So, uh, Huggins. Me.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
All right, Wegman.
Here.
Thank you.
Well, maybe you forgot me. Okay, so approval of minutes for the meeting of zoning board of appeals of February twelfth, two thousand twenty five. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion by, uh, number Smith, second by Wegman.
Second, approval of minutes for the meeting of zoning, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Uh, me.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Wait.
Yes.
Approval of minutes for the meeting of zoning board of appeals from March twelfth, two thousand twenty five. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second.
A motion by Swanson, second by Smith. Continue instructions. Me?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Wegman?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, ZBA two zero two five dash zero zero seven. Design review for approval of a hundred and twenty square foot dumpster enclosure at Dollar General located at forty seven thirty three Blue Stem Road. So, just having one.
Yeah, I can take it away. Um, so this is the Dollar General that's, uh, kinda in the commercial area over by the Schnucks grocery store, CBS Pizza Ranch, um, kinda in that area. So we were contacted by Nick Chapman, the applicant, uh, about a month ago. I mean, just looking to put up an extension of his dumpster enclosure. He has some uh, their trash bins and things that are outside of it right now and, um, he just wants to come into compliance with the bill of ordinance that requires him to put it in an enclosure. Um, so he kinda asked about the process, uh, what it would take to get approved. Uh, because it's commercial, it has to come through the ZBA for design review. Um, he had indicated that the fence, uh, material would match what's out there right now. It's just a just an addition off what's there now. Uh, it does take out one parking space, but there's more than enough out there. I think the, uh, the staff report says there's forty spaces out there now. Uh, they need one space for two fifty, so they need thirty four spaces. They got six in surplus to uh, kinda play with, so taking out one or two would not be, staff doesn't believe that it'll be affect the parking demand for the area too much or the parking supply either. Uh, it's consistent with the zoning district and the zoning standards that are out there. So, uh, with all that considered, uh, staff recommends approval.
The discussion?
Well, this, this picture can't be what they.
Exactly.
It's, yeah, it is kinda, it is an AI generated image, it looks like, but he did say to be several times that it would match what's out there. And that's just kinda the general rendering that he had had.
Is that in the parking lot or on the sidewalk?
It's in the parking lot area of the building. There's no sidewalk out there.
Okay, well, he put it on the side.
The other one in the picture is really nice.
They would lose a parking place because a truck would have to get added there.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, it's going in the same place the current one is, correct? Or?
That's where the dump is right now.
Yep.
Correct.
So now there is, there isn't any enclosure now?
It's.
There, there is one. Yeah, there is one. It's just not big enough to hold, uh, the trash bins that they have, so they have to, they expand it a little bit to put that in there.
So they're gonna expand or they're making a whole new one?
They're expanding what's out there right now.
Well, there any more discussion?
Questions?
And can we make a motion to approve or disapprove?
I'll make a motion to approve the expansion.
I'll second it.
And we get a roll call.
Motion by Smith, second by Swanson. Oh, sorry, and by Wegman, why I always say that sometimes. Uh, let's see, Smith? Yes. Swanson?
Yes.
Wegman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Second item on the new business is, uh, ZBA two zero two five dash zero zero eight. A discussion on future amendment to the article thirteen planned unit development, PUD of chapter one five five, which is the zoning regulation of the village code of ordinance. So, uh, I was just gonna see, Evan, if you could kinda give us an overview. Why we need, what, 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 what's the reason?
And sure.
What, what we wanna do here?
So Joe and I have been talking through this, uh, for a couple of months now. Uh, there have been s- a few developers that have asked about our PUD requirements for the village when something comes forward. Um, and the village handles it in a kinda one step approval process where they have to have a site layout, a site design, full landscaping drawings, full construction drawings, uh, building schematics, all the engineering requirements met. Uh, that's how the village does it right now. Previously before two thousand twenty one, it was done in a two step process where you would have a general development plan, so that kinda lays out your zoning setbacks, layout for the site, the general uh, densities and things like that. And then the second step would be a, what's called a precise implementation plan. So at that point, that's when you get your full landscaping, full schematics, full engineering, and all those more detailed drawings. And the two step process is how the vast majority of communities do it, uh, do their PUDs. Um, if you do the one step process, the, the developer really runs the risk of pricing, getting all those really expensive drawings and more really detailed drawings right away. Whereas with the two step process, it's the general site layout and things, and you get all the zoning and, um, you get the ZBA and the village board to sign off on the layout of the project and get agreed to that before you go and spend all the money on all those landscaping, engineering subdivision drawings. So what this amendment would be doing is going back to that two step process. Um, that doesn't mean that somebody couldn't do it all in one night in one meeting, if it's a more simple project. But, um, with separating this out, it really kinda gives some not leniency, but it gives some flexibility to somebody that wants to come forward with a project to say, hey, I have an idea, I have a concept, let's get that approved and get everybody to sign on to it before, um, going too far and maybe spending a lot of money and a lot of time and effort right away.
Do we know just why they went in twenty one, two thousand twenty one, why they went to the, back to the one or to the one?
It could have been, uh, from what I can think of, it could have been to discourage the use of PUD, but like I said.
I was here at the time. I mean, honestly, I think it was not discussed. I don't, I don't, man, I can see where it was, I, there was, I'll tell you, was, we, there was never discussions about discouraging these PUDs. I think it was the zoning code got rewritten by the consulting firm came through here, by zoning administrator, and I don't think it was ever looked at or discussed. I think it was one more standard. There was much less, there were much less standards in the code or PUDs at the time. So I think it was probably the intention of, okay, we're gonna see all these things in the PUD. But I think it was, okay, well, they threw it into one sort of, I don't know, they copied it from my own place or if it was just thrown together, but I think it was probably we wanna see more detail in the PUD, but not considering that, okay, to get all that detail, we might certainly need to have it all upfront, um, as opposed to splitting it up how it was previously. Um, cause yeah, I, I mean, I think that, yeah, I, I mean, we're here, but I think that's probably what the reason was. And some of you might have been here. Well, we were here, some of you were here when we, when we adopted that. I don't know there was any line of discussion about, if you remember any discussion about the reasons for it. I think it was one of those things that it was, let's make it more detailed.
Streamline over detail.
Yeah, I think that's probably where it was. And it turned into a one step process as opposed to this, the split.
Yeah, it seemed like to me like, it was like, okay, we wanna speed it up by maybe going from two steps to one step, but in the process of doing that, you, it ended up probably being taken longer because you're, you're trying to put all the detailed stuff at the same time that you're doing the, the PUD.
With a risk of being denied, yeah.
I mean, Evan, you can explain some of those you've had recently. You got, you've all seen some of these too coming through. We've had a lot of PUD requests coming through recently. I think Greg Powers would be a good example, but.
Yeah, I think, if you even think to last month with the Lot A, I mean, uh, going back and forth with Jeff Licken held on that. Um, for them to spend all the money to get the full landscaping and the full engineering and schematic drawings for that, instead of just coming forward with a concept plan that was pretty basic. I mean, it, it probably added another, probably another month on the project just because we had to discuss the layout and they were a little hesitant with spending money on getting the more expensive drawings done. So I mean, if they would have had some assurance with, hey, your layout's fine, your zoning's fine, we've got these flexibilities for you. Now we can negotiate landscaping and the patio, the park kinda element. I mean, that, that gets, it just gives the developer a little bit more breathing room, little bit more assurance that they're not, they're not taking as big of a, a leap on the first, on the one approval.
You think they'll encourage more? You know, being that it's separated, that at least this way they know they don't have to have all the details, right? You know, just maybe there'd be more opportunity to encourage other developers to get involved even.
I, I would think maybe, yeah, that there could be some more interest. I don't, at the same time though, since it's a less detailed submittal for a general development plan, that doesn't necessarily mean that's, there's gonna be a lot more staff time that's gonna be needed for each one of these things, cause we can look at uh, a concept plan for zoning and a site layout, and it can be a lot more, not streamlined, but it can be a lot simpler than looking at the detailed landscaping specifications and, uh, the architecture and design of the building and things like that. Um, but yeah, I will just say that, that the vast majority of other communities use this kinda two step process to maybe weed out a project that is coming forward, that it, it might be easier to just say, hey, the, the village, the city isn't interested in this kinda, this kinda concept rather than.
I'll say, what we've seen too coming through the last few months here, um, or last year, I guess, here too, that so there's a lot of developers come in and they want that, and we gave you the all asset, can you give me some assurances to be approved by the board or by the CBA? And of course, we can't, right? Because we've got standards, we have to go through our zoning code that's in place, and so we can just look at the zoning code. We're not, we can't, you know, say, yeah, the board will approve this, this is great. We can say, if it meets the zoning code, it will be fine, or if it meets the subdivision code, it'll be fine. So I think this will help with that a little bit, to answer your question, I think it will help, um, give the assurances, at least saying, okay, yeah, you can at least do the, the minimum, show us your site plan, show us where your buildings are gonna be, if, yeah, Evan is exactly correct, the Petrie one's a good example of it. Show us where your building is, show us where your general layout is. If the, then that way the CBA and the board can approve that, it doesn't cost all that much to do, all that much time to do. Um, and then once it's approved, we say, yeah, you got, now you come in, you spend all the money on their, the client details, right? So I think it does, I think it does help encourage that, or at least make a little more effort for the developers.
It'd be a little easier to approve than the, in the first step, knowing that you have the second step, because if you don't have this two steps, it's like, okay, now we gotta really, you know, scrutinize so that way we don't pass something that, you know, that we're not gonna, we're gonna regret later on.
Uh, I've got a few questions. Evan, um, uh, hello, so I've been through these multiple states and, uh, it seems like Wisconsin likes those acronyms a lot. Uh, last I was at up in Oshkosh and it's, I think they call it GDP and PDP and all these, all these things, which is kind of comical, but, um, I agree in general with the principle of this. I guess the question is, if you, the GDP is the only public hearing portion, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, and I like the, the scope, the requirements of that list. Uh, there's some Illinois suburbs i- in the collar counties that require a lot more full engineering sometimes with the, with this full first step, so I, I think this is very reasonable. There's situations though of public hearings where you know, you got an audience out there that is in opposition to the project and they ask about traffic, they ask about stormwater. How much of that? It, well, you know, it's contentious enough to require the developer to look at those things first as a first step? Because a lot of those come up and you can't answer those questions unless you actually go through the motion, so is that case by case or, you know?
I mean, that is something that maybe we could consider putting in here that there's um, maybe the ZBA has to make a determination if a traffic or a traffic impact analysis or um, some sort of higher stormwater standards are gonna be a condition of the GDP approval? Maybe that's something that they have to show in the PIP?
Sure. And it could be case by case. I just know a lot of cases with meetings that even if stormwater is not required, a lot of times you have to present that you're not, you know, to neighbors and that, that you're not creating a downstream issue, so we have to look at it in advance anyways. In general though, don't take that as criticism. I, I do like the scope.
Not at all, not at all.
From a developer standpoint, um, and you mentioned my earlier, so the, you can combine these if it's not a very, we don't staff and everybody kind of agrees, it's kind of a slam dunk. They can be combined.
Yeah, I, yeah, let's say there's like a a new use that needs more parking spaces, but the lot's too small. I mean, we could probably do that in a, in a one, one approval me, like a, it'd probably be separated into GDP and PIP in the item, but we would just say one item GDP and PIP and.
But depending on the size and the scope of the, the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I like that flexibility, cause I've, I've read into that too. If it's, you know, a simple project, it does make sense. Um, couple questions on the, on the PIP portion. Uh, maybe I took this out of context, so I apologize if I did that in advance, but, you know, that's definitely more specific in terms of the scope needed items. Items eleven and twelve talk about a site plan and then twelve is the final flat drawings. Shouldn't those be actually required as part of the PIP? Or am I, am I misreading that?
They include site plan. They include final pla- I mean, yeah, I guess if it's um, like I said, one of those smaller projects, maybe it doesn't include that, but, um, if, if we wanted to change those may include to
Yeah.
must include, we could, we could definitely do that.
It's a minor, maybe it's a wording thing, that, that caught my attention.
Yeah, what you question?
On eleven. Eleven, well, it just says may include site plan and then may include a flat.
Okay.
And my thinking was, you're asking for landscaping already. Everything else is good, you're asking for these things, which we should.
Sure.
Uh, traffic study is in the section two. I just thought maybe the word may should be, they only should be included.
Okay.
That's all. Again, I thought maybe I've misread it on a context, but, um, that's really the only questions I have after I've through it, but you know, overall, I think it's a good, a good step for the village to use this. This, uh, procedure and it's, you know, for some flexibility in that, it's, that's good.
And for the developer, once they know they've gotten through the first step, they, like you said, that gives them enough to where they know that the, the plan is, you know, people are happy with the plan, it's just a matter that we need to see the specifics, so uh, there'll be more, uh, I would hope detailed in their, in the PIP.
Most traffic situations we've run into would be needing a turn lane or, or something like that, not all the clients up close in the county anyway.
It does, it's what we require and.
It's just something we would red flag, but they're.
Yeah, yeah, um, well, it depends on which roads are there, right? We've had, depends on which roads they are. Cause we've had a few recently where we talked about it, relieve our county roads, that's what we say goes to the county, but, um, we've, we've been also requesting for village roads, I suppose, in some situations, if they're not hooking into a county road.
Okay.
I just happened to go to county road recently, it's because there's a lot of developments we've had where they're abiding to, uh, you know, in major county roads. But yeah, yeah.
The, the ideal situation would be for developers to not get tabled because, oh, now I gotta put a traffic study together, so ideally work together with staff and say, hey, we suspect you're gonna need this, you know, somehow, and then they do it upfront as part of that first step, that, that's what's, you know, still like a table, but at least you got some.
That's what we've been trying to do so over the last year here, um, since Paramos, come on tonight, come on, we've started meeting with developers, we put them up front, go through all of this stuff with them. You know, initially, try to get all that stuff out of the way, here's all the things you could do, so we're hoping that it doesn't happen as much. Um, but yeah, this is always one where it's like, yeah, we need all this information from you right now, so. Uh, yeah, I think this will be my perspective at least, so I think this will help with.
Well, about smaller builders to
Yeah.
get in business, cause the other way it's, you just compete.
Yep. And it's, it's really that confidence on, am I even gonna even be able to do this project?
Right.
That's really what it is. I mean, ultimately, it's pretty much the same stuff, right? It ends up being the same landscaping plan, the same plant, the same stuff. But it's, it's when they come in, it is smaller builders coming in, hey, are we gonna get approval on this? I, I don't know, I don't, we don't know, and we can't even,
Yeah.
you know, for our code, we can't even give you that answer or even bring it to the ZBA or the board yet, because we don't have these signals yet, so. You know, that's, that's always been the issue. Yeah, it is the smaller developers who, hey, before I spent all this money on this, which could be a big portion for them.
Exactly.
Um, you know, can I even get some assurance? And we try to give assurance as much as we can, um, when we can, but it's just, I think this will help with that.
Well, this, this, all this text that they can use, you know, as a template to, you know, to to what they need to provide, you know? So that makes it, it should help them do their job even.
Yeah, I think it definitely helps the less savvy developers realize the hurdles they have and.
It does take time to, I mean, get to know people involved, right?
Yeah.
It is a process.
And for the bigger developments, like they figure Schnucks, right? Those are the ones where like, well, you know, we've had things change over the course of you know, the fifteen, twenty years that it's been there, they come in for those developing, Starbucks was probably the most recent, building out, build out over there. I mean, that was what, twenty years after the, the PUD was put in place, right? That's a PUD. Um, and so, yeah, then they come into that, that SIP or the SIP or the PIP or whatever you're calling on this, but, um, yeah, so I think it, yeah, it helps with the big, big developments and it helps for the smaller ones too. Yeah, I guess, look at it, I, I, are we asking for a vote tonight? I don't think we are.
No.
Yeah, so if you got, if you, as you look at this more, as you, you know, think about it and think about what you've seen coming through, and then our, we'll talk to our other ZBA members too, um, you know, you, you've had more experience with this than a lot of us here, just seeing what the public or what the developers have been responding, right? So, yeah, might as well, there's things you wanna change or address, look at and we'll get those moved forward, but yeah.
Nice. When will this be presented for approval?
Um, I don't, I think probably bring it to the ZBA again, maybe next month or?
Yeah, I think with, with kinda the feedback you guys have had tonight, it's just minor changes that we can do and bring it back in, in May.
And this is one of those things too where, you know, we have, we get approval or not approval. Um, we had to publish for this because it's a public hearing, so I, we were published for a public hearing on it until we sort of had some, you know, brainstorm sessions here too and got your input on it, so we're sort of doing the same thing that the developers do, but, um, but that's why, yeah, we're having it tonight like this, just to to see if there's anything you can sort of, you know, obviously see here, changes to make, and then we'll have the official public hearing on it and then bring it to the board after that.
How long ahead do you know when you're gonna have a rush on our meetings? High attendance from the.
I would never have guessed, generally we do, I would never guess the last, um, last time we were had that, there were people. Um, they were off the road. I mean, actually, let's, why finish this topic? I feel like, let's finish this topic so that we don't throw out the recordings here, we're out of the minutes. And I will, I will address that and the question, uh, out, you know, publicly here, but, um, so I guess, I, I guess, is there anything else on that topic?
Anybody else got anything? No?
No, I guess we don't really need a vote on that, so.
Well, so with the discussion on that future amendment is, uh, over, we can, uh, is there any old business?
I will address the old business question. Um, so yeah, first question was, yeah, how, how long we know? Generally, we do know that one, I think we were surprised by it, um, I don't, because I, I was surprised by it.
I was too.
We got some information on that. I always felt there'd be more for the other, the Petrie one than that, but, um, so that would actually, we'll be back in front of you, uh, because Spira, our property, the annexation property, um, and we're next to Remington Creek, they actually withdrew their application, so it was approved, the board, uh, committee moved it forward for, uh, for approval at this next Tuesday's meeting. Um, they are, they do wanna work there, they really wanna work with the neighbors and with that, that neighborhood over there, so they're very concerned, they don't wanna just keep plowing forward with this. So they have withdrawn the application, um, they're going to do a they're going to do a, they're gonna split off, they're, they're gonna add still, but they're gonna split off just a parcel they're using for their their house, their, their home, their building there. Um, so there's that one portion of the property, I remember from the, where the house was located, but there's, I think, maybe I don't know, twenty, ten acres, maybe, twenty acres, um, they're gonna split off, um, and so that will be split off, that'll be annexed into the village, um, proposed as a real residential, a real estate, sorry, real estate. And then the remainder will actually stay in the county as agriculture land.
Okay.
So they, they are, they're, they wanna show the residents that they're, this is what we wanna do, we're doing what we're trying to do.
How will they access their property?
It will be, it'll be connected into the, the neighborhood, into the, um.
Subdivision.
They're gonna have a road going through the.
They're just gonna.
It'll be a cul-de-sac.
Existing road.
Yeah, the existing road becomes, it dead ends into their property.
Yeah.
So it was always intended to be developed for the future, but it, it dead ends in there, so what they're gonna do is they'll install a cul-de-sac to our standards, right now it just dead ends, it's just a road that just ends at the property. Um, that would, they will have to build a cul-de-sac onto that, and then their driveway will hook into that cul-de-sac and then be a very, very long, long paved driveway, like it was gonna be anyway. But it'll be a long, long paved driveway up to their, their.
So it'll be a, be a driveway rather than a village street.
Yes, yeah, they'll have a driveway going to their house, but it'll connect in at the, at Remington Creek, they'll go into Remington Creek or through Remington Creek to get to their house.
What was the purpose of annexation then? For them, I guess, what's the benefit or the need? Versus staying in the county altogether?
Um, I don't.
I was curious.
I think part, well, I think part of it was maybe hooking into our road, but I suppose they could do it anyway. Um, I, they chose to do that, there's not utilities out there, we don't have utilities, right? Um, there's not, well, we don't have utilities, so it's a matter for us anyway.
Yeah.
It's the road, I think, I think to be part of that neighborhood, to join into there, I think the county generally encourages people who are going to develop and develop, to, um, figure a flat, to join a municipality in the area. I think that was one of the reasons, and I think, I, I, I don't, I mean, besides that, it's, that's what we got, I guess. I, it had the reasons, I guess, but that's, that's just the plan.
So does that have to come back to be the, the zoning again?
This is starting from scratch.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it will start from the, then, um, they'll be presenting the, sort of the same thing, but they'll just be presenting their just their parcel that they're gonna be splitting off.
Because before, they were just gonna build in this area, switch the whole property.
The whole property was maybe, so if you.
But then they wanted to reserve the agricultural.
Yeah.
And now they're actually doing it. And now they're actually doing it correctly.
Well, I don't know what's correct. They're doing it so that the residents believe them. I think that was interesting. They were concerned because they wanted to be their neighbors. They were concerned that, you know, there's so, there's bad blood there. They don't, they, they don't want people to think they're going to develop this into a homeless subdivision. Like, like, we'll, we'll show you that. We're just going to develop our little spot here into it and we'll, we'll break off into it.
Okay.
It didn't help when that one exhibit showed.
Yeah, that was also.
You couldn't come to, to say why they did that either, yeah.
Well, he said that that was his original intent, but he changed his mind.
Yeah.
And it might be, was a part of it flood?
It sounded like it was doing your diligence when they did that portion of it. And then, yeah, there's a lot of flood zones in there and there's a lot of, uh. Lot of topography. I mean, there's, I mean, it's a forty foot. Straight drop into that, so.
Like a really neat old place to build their house.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm sure there are multiple reasons, but.
They're all going to be happy, yay.
Hopefully, I think, I think. This should address the concerns that they brought up, the residents brought up, the neighbors brought up.
Yeah.
Right? Just sort of show, yep, we're, we're, we told you we're going to do, we'll make it as fast as possible to just do what we told you, so.
That's all the old business? Uh, I don't know if there's any public comment.
What about the, when I wrote there, the awful level book where they had the two, uh. Two buildings started and then the developer died or the contractor died.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that, that is, do you remember? Uh, Evan. We, we found out who bought it, I think. It's, um.
Uh, yeah, we had a beat, um.
It's one of the real estate agents here or brokers around here.
Well, they're keeping it kind of quiet. I haven't heard. I've been trying to get ahold of somebody about it, but it's not.
I don't know what it has been, I only have closed diet.
Yeah.
Of course, I think they're in due diligence. We've, we've met with them. I've talked to the, I don't remember who it was. I've talked with the, the potential buyer.
It's not one of the local builders.
No.
That you've been dealing with.
No.
Cause what, what's, what's that, what's that called, Joe? Is it?
Uh, those are Willow Creek, right? That's, yeah, that's Phyllis of Willow Creek, of Willow Creek. Um, it's, it's, I don't remember who it is. I, I, I'm assuming it's public. Maybe we should call up who we, if we find it there, but. It is a local, it's a region, it's a real estate person, um, who worked in the area before. Um, they were doing due diligence on it and I believe they won the property, uh, in auction. And their, their plan is just to keep on, actually their plan, I believe, is to build all of it together. Um, that's my understanding. It's going to build, originally they were building a building every couple of years and I believe the plan is now.
Development on, on, uh. Elevator and Willow Brook and where they got.
Yeah, across from Life Church.
Yeah. No, pass that.
Further.
Yep.
Those, the ones they started, the two condos or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That, rather for that.
Okay.
Contractor died, contractor died.
I was actually wondering why they, they, cause they. The, the multifamilies are going up pretty quick and, and those were sitting.
Yeah. And it's because, yeah.
But he's always been doing it that way, like you said.
He's always been doing it one sort of piecemeal at a time. And we, the, you guys went through and we looked at that. Change they did and all of that. We approved it all. So, yeah, we worked a lot with them.
I mean, there is a pent up demand for it. People are asking me all the time and I'm like, good God, get it on.
And so my understanding is that it's going to be all at once. It's still build out the rest of the, we, we approved them.
There's not that much.
We approved them here. There's not many. There's, I think, three more buildings, four more buildings.
Yeah, that'll be awesome to get that done.
Yeah.
What about, what about, uh. East of, uh, Mary, or west of Mary's Market there?
Um. They have subdivision back there or the?
There's property there.
Property there.
Yeah, we have talked about that.
We talked about that within the last year.
Oh, yeah. So that is going to be, I think we're talking about the one in Prairie Rose or?
Yeah, it's in that area.
So, yeah, that is coming through. That will come, I believe, where that will probably come next board meeting, I think. Is that our next C B A meeting? Is that, that's Pipetones, right?
The Prairie Rose.
Yeah, we got, we got some mail for that, I think. Um, so, yeah, the, that's, uh, Tony Pipitone is going, is bought that and is developing that. That same, that's a lot of the same stuff, right? That he should, it'll match up with the rest of them there.
Okay.
Um, and so we got those plans, I think. That seminals on those, and those will come in the Z B A in the next, probably next month for those.
Okay.
And he's, probably he wants to, you know, break down. He's moving forward nicely on that one.
Yeah, it's that one.
You guys don't, you're not doing that one, right?
You might be. We're doing something for him, but I can't think of it. It's that one.
Yeah, I think he might be actually.
Yeah, it sounds familiar.
Yeah, so anyway, they, um, he'll be here, I think, next month or.
Okay.
So we have that one going, that's good. Um. Yeah, with you. But, yeah, residential, I mean, it's constant, right? We, we have a lot of building of it, most of Petrie stuff, but. Yeah, we're always, all these infill lots are being built.
Are they, when I drive by the multifamily? Josh's, I don't see a lot going on.
So Josh's will be preparing for sport on a different issue, um, shortly, but, yeah, he is. Getting ready to full, go full speed on that one as well. Yeah. I don't remember what the holdup was. There was some stuff he was working through on that as well.
Where, where was that at?
That was on Hawks Point five and six.
Yeah, where everyone went really upset about that one.
So those are, he's got, we got those plans up. Well, you got me approved from here, right? Recently, yeah. So those are for six at least. And then five, I believe is on its way, um. Peasing it, piecing it back into that a little more, so. Cool, it's going forward, yeah.
Do we know from him yet if he's selling them as condos?
So that is what's going to be, I guess, is, uh, old business, new business, wherever this is, but this will be in front of you. Um, a next, sort of the next one, next one of these we're going to be talking about, next amendments, the zoning code we'll be talking about as well as sort of a interim, just sort of a. Special version that we're going to be doing. Uh, what he's looking to do is condos there.
Okay.
Problem is, and we've had this from multiple developers, and one of these, we've had multiple developers, developers coming through. Um, he's looking to do condos, but essentially attached single family.
Okay.
Or, or attached, whatever they are, multifamily townhouses, not, but not condos, I guess. And you probably know more than, than other people about this.
We're a weird area.
There's, it's a, it's a strange thing about how the, the loans work and the financing works for this. And I've had multiple, multiple. Developers coming through and ask here, here, South Lloyd, Rockton, um, I worked for them too, same thing, um, different developers. Where the financing is different for a condo versus a attached. Whatever, what are we calling these? Attached, single family attached, what do you call?
Uh, I, the district is called residential attached, but yeah, like, single family attached.
Single family attached, yeah.
That would indicate to me that they're rentals.
Well, he wants to sell, they'll, they'll be, he wants to sell them, um, individually out.
Without an H O A.
Who, there'll be, it will be a homeowners association. There won't be a condo association though.
Wow.
Yep, so there will be a condo associate, or a homeowners association, not a condo association. It has to do with how the financing works with what your, and, and insurance, I believe.
For us.
What you're insuring on it. So you're insuring just your portion of it, but I still quite understand how they get their, the buildings, but.
The condo associations are getting hit hard with insurance.
Yeah, and so that's what, we've had a bunch of people coming through, a bunch of developers coming through and asking about. So it will, he's, right now. And he wants to sell them as individual homes. That's his plan on that.
Okay.
Um, for that particular area. I think the first one, he's going to have to end up renting it or is one. He'll try to sell them, I think, but there'll be rentals, probably one unit. But if we can get this figured out and through here, the goal is to have them actually owned by individual people.
Okay.
Yeah, so they'd be, they'd be effectively single family homes that are just zero lot line and a share of all, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's a strange thing. I, I don't know. I'm not a huge fan of that personally, but.
We just haven't heard that much where it's east, we do.
It's just a strange, yeah, it's a strange thing and. We've gotten more and more requests from different developers on it, so.
Okay.
That's, we'll bring something through and we'll talk about it and we'll figure out if it makes sense.
I know what's coming.
Yep, so that's, yeah, that's what's going on those, so. Any other things?
Any other old business?
Okay, that's everything I have.
Okay, if there's that's several old business and there's no public comment, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
I will be able to call.
Oh, sorry.
Or I'll say, all in favor? Yes.
Yes.
All right. Um, who, sorry, I missed who was the first motion. He, it's motion by Smith second by. Like that, and it's all. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Bye.